It's a subtle hint. It's six P M. So we can get started for town and Freetown Planning Board Meeting Tuesday, November twelfth, twenty twenty four. Please let the record reflect that all the members are here. First order of business, continued definitive subdivision thirty two Middleborough Road and zero Clermont Way, applicant James Simmons, Simmons Development Incorporated, owner Edmund, Richard Armand, and Robert Clermont, representative Jason Youngquist, Outback Engineering Incorporated, scope of work eight lot subdivision. Is Mr. Youngquist here?
Yes, I am.
Would you like to give us the low down?
Absolutely.
The the way we're gonna do this is they're gonna present the the subdivision to the board. We have questions, and I will open it up to the public if we have questions afterwards. You should go.
So I'm Jason Youngquist from Outback Engineering with the applicant James Simons. Usually the plans up on the screen. Are we doing that or?
Either way, whatever works for you. I have the plans.
Okay, I see him right there.
I just didn't know which way, which one to do.
Yep, no, it's fine.
I don't know why it's not connecting.
I was bringing the full set just in case. I did. I left these on the.
It was working earlier, I see.
Yeah, I don't know why it's not.
I see it from the truck.
That was your human feet back there.
Yeah.
Gotta talk quickly.
While we're waiting, is anybody taping this, meeting it off? We are taping it. And is there is there somebody on on over Zoom?
Um, I think there was someone.
We are taping it. Yeah. Go ahead.
Again, I'm just.
We need a motion to open.
Hmm. We're continuing this. Yeah, I I'm I'm new at this. So sure, I'll need a motion in a second to to reopen the the definitive subdivision of thirty two Middleborough Road.
I'll make a motion and open it second.
Motion's been made in second at all as a favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Now you can go.
All right. So Jason Youngquist Outback Engineering here with the applicant James Simons. And this is Clermont Way, extension of the existing Clermont Way. This was a subdivision that was before the board a few years back. So it's just a reiteration of that. The sixteen point six acre parcel located, the address is thirty two Middleborough Road, but it's actually on Clermont Way. It's in the generally used zoning district as well as the residential zoning district, the zone line, that's right through the middle of the property. It's a wooded parcel. Lot one has the existing house on it with its lawn and driveway and garages. But the rest of the property is all wooded. Generally slopes from the from the south to the north. It's a gentle hill sloping down, and there's wetlands areas to the to the west side of property. Lots of all been perked to the sandy, sandy land soils, appropriate generally to ten twenty minutes range. As I mentioned, the applicants proposing to extend Clermont Way an additional six hundred feet to provide frontage and access for any proposed house lots, which includes the existing house as well. Those lots would have individual septic systems and private wells. And we're proposing a drainage system for all additional runoff that would be generated by the additional payment for the new road. The basin size for over the hundred year storm event. Original design we did for hundreds of years storm event that was required by that fee for more management policy. But at our conservation meeting, we met with the butter to the north who has cranberry bogs, who was concerned about, you know, what if it's more than a hundred years? So, you know, his livelihood is the bogs and additional rain and flooding would affect that. So we increased the size with the revised plans, the size of the drainage basin. So now it can hold over a ten inch storm. Hundred year storm event is right around eight and a half inches. Now we can take care of it over a ten inch, ten and a half inch storm. So we've increased the size of the drainage basin significantly beyond, well beyond what's required by by the storm warning management policy. Analyze two, ten, twenty five, fifty, hundred year storm events to make sure we weren't increasing offsite flows, flow rates or volumes for any of the storm events. Sometimes when you take care of the bigger ones, yes, inadvertently increase your flow on the smaller ones, but we analyze it for everything to make sure even when you have the smaller rain events, we're not impacted on any of the butters. The basin is primarily an infiltration basin where the runoff is stored. Slowly infiltrated back into groundwater, but some water is released to the wetlands. And again, we analyzed to make sure we weren't increasing the flow for those wetlands. Actually, we're reducing the flow.
That way, going that way to the wetlands?
Yes. Yeah. We've actually reduced the flow that goes to the wetlands. But to make sure that we weren't going to impact any of the butters, but especially the butter to the north with cranberry bogs. Especially with the conservation, great concern about additional water going towards there. So we want to make sure that would not happen with this development. These plans are under review by your consultant. They had a a list of revisions that they requested with environmental partners. We've made those revisions, plans have been sent back, those are plans reported there. And we're waiting for environmental partners to review our revisions, see if they have any additional comments. We've also been for conservation. Got an initial hearing. Presented the project to them. And again, they're waiting to hear back, you know, the final, that's the final set of plans, final set of revisions from the environmental partners. So obviously, we're waiting to hear back from the consultant, but we just definitely want to get from the board. See if you had any additional comments or questions that we could address while we're doing any final revisions that we might be making.
I have I have a couple. I've just, are you gonna be looking to have the town accept this as a road?
Yes.
Yeah.
There was there's a list of waivers, and I know E P G has has come back, and you've come back with questions on that. I was not able, I only got this stuff today, so I wasn't able to really look at the new plans, but under waiver requests on your email, I noticed that you said three of them have been removed. And there was thirteen originally, and there's still thirteen, so.
Yep, there was some additional ones that were added for in in general, they're not things that would not allow the way to proceed. It just makes it more more in conformance with the surroundings, you know, you're asking for instead of a thirty foot roadway down to twenty four. I think, you know, thirty foot roadway back to get to those house lots would be just too much road. It's a dead end road. And then there's the additional waivers. One is to have the plan at a fifty scale, so you can see it all on one sheet instead of forty scale. So it's just, it's waivers like that.
So you added, you added some from the first?
Yep.
Okay, that's that's, I just did the arithmetic and, you know, thirteen minus, ten and thirteen minus three didn't equal thirteen. I didn't.
The new map.
Yeah. And for people that, E P G is the consultants we use that go over the plans with a fine tooth comb. It's paid for by the applicant. And we rely on them to come up with any issues that 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 the board is not able to to figure out, or we don't have the skill set to do that. And there's a little back and forth with the with the developer, and at the end, if there's some issues that that they can't resolve, then that's up to us to say yea or nay on, say, waiver requests or things like that. Before I, before I I just have one other quick question. Did the fire chief say anything about the roadway going being too narrow in the front there? One other thing, too.
We have not heard any comments from or anything provided from them, but again, we're widening that whole stretch, the initial six hundred feet, I'm sorry, the initial five hundred feet is gonna be widened to the twenty four foot width.
From Route eighteen down.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right now, it's now.
Yeah, when we were widening. We're gonna, we're gonna replace the whole thing.
Yeah.
We did a site visit, yeah.
Yeah.
It's a long time. I went out to a site visit, yeah, a long time. This was already a whole. Yeah. Done deal.
Back in twenty seventeen or something.
It was all done. And that's what that was in, and we widened the existing road. So we're basically, you know, basically, we're not looking for anything that we hadn't already been presented to the board. Yeah. Back in, obviously seventeen, you know what I mean? No, I remember.
I do have one other question. If you look at the the maps, I think this lot here has a sliver that goes down and is actually frontage on there. Is that true? That could be an issue. That is not true.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Okay, cuz it's it's shown on the G I S maps. It it.
That was found from a lot from the previous purchaser. They had, and people lived there all their life and we've never seen that before.
Okay, for the record, did you state your name? Thank you. Thank you. Okay.
No, that's been found before. We're not sure where that came from.
It it's on the map. If you highlight that, it shows all the way down to there on the.
I have the original plot plan. I have the original deed from when the lot was purchased from Maury and first two mill yard road, and there's nothing on it that states. Yeah, our survey did not come up with that.
Okay.
Yeah.
I don't know where that's come from. It's really weird. It's strange that it shows up on some and not all.
Yeah.
I think it's from this.
Randomly back in twenty seventeen, I was at first, when there was a bunch of discussions, somehow it randomly showed up there for the first time.
Nicole supplied us with something that there's a little sliver on some map dated nineteen seventy three. Plan and profile of proposed new roadway. Well, if the surveying doesn't show it, and you don't, I'm not, I'm not, I wasn't worried about it. Okay, so those are kind of my initial questions that I had to open up to the board for any other questions they might want. Anybody?
Big thing on the side, I remember was the water. You know, from that, it's a big thing for us.
While we increased the size of our drainage basin.
That was a big, that was a big worry last time. What I addressed them, and I asked them in the pilot lot, what what do you need? What, you know? Yeah, yeah. Work, work with everybody. I'm just trying to get the development to go through and and everybody appease. Yeah. Everybody the best I can, you know?
Push down. So this, you beat this up at all, or this was based on your feedback?
That's increased significantly.
That's what they.
That was, that was a problem originally, yeah.
Beat it up.
Anybody have any other questions?
There was some question about the swale increasing the pitch on it. So we've taken this one out as part of this. It was a swell. That was the deflect runoff before it got to the development, so we've taken that out. Increase the size of the drainage basin to account for any obviously runoff that would be heading this way.
Yeah, we all. Bales have any questions further? I would then, I'd open it up to the public. If somebody wants to ask a question, just state your name for the record. Sure, a gentleman there.
My name is Frank Ashley. I'm in the butter. Twenty sixteen road and fifty two Middleborough Road, because I thought Frank Ashley. Everything here revolves around water. I have a whole list of issue. And we'll start with, I have bought by approximately fifteen hundred feet. And that does change up depending on what set of plans you look at, whether you look at this set of plans from twenty seventeen that Mr. Churchill wrote up, or the set of plans that we have that Mr. Cass wrote for our own property. All the footages seem to be different corner to corner, and then also some of the dog hairs, essentially the dog legs on the longest piece of property. The dog legs appear to be in different positions and at different angles and at different lengths. Not sure what that's all about, why all three don't jive within a couple inches, but here or there, the main issue is water. I have bought by fifteen hundred feet, and I catch all of the water from every direction of these properties. Look, the one that crosses this property. A portion of it starts from Pine Court. Pine Court is an issue. It was developed, and no retention pond was ever put in. How that was ever allowed to happen? Don't know. It was bylaws, there was state laws. It didn't happen. We have to live with it. We went to the town, we were told nothing we can do about it, but I brought, like, last night's bag. So we went to the feds, the state, the feds. We have directed a large portion of that water that comes off Pine Court that comes down and crosses, let's see, the backside of Shepherd, Tony, Tony's last name, and then also Onyx property, and then it crosses Ambrose's property. The large portion is through Ambrose's property. We can catch it in a twenty four inch pipe, which I have pictures, in a two to three inch rainstorm, that twenty four inch pipe is completely full. It's maxed out. Anything over that in a rainstorm, it floods into our bar, which has another twenty four inch pipe, which then floods out a reservoir, which has a thirty six inch pipe, which then floods out my backyard, because Keen Road only has a twelve inch and a ten inch pipe, ten and twelve inch pipe. That is thirty six inches deep. Okay? So now that's, that's the general layout of how the water flows. Now let's get to the retention pond. The retention pond right now, currently at the six, sits at an elevation of eighty four feet. Our cranberry block sits at an elevation of seventy eight feet, which means that the volume of this pit is six feet above ours. At seventy eight feet, which is where our cranberry block is, there is a restrictive layer of clay. I know because it's on it. So with his water infiltration in seventy two hours, which is a requirement from sixteen acres, plus all the water that it catches from Pine Court is now gonna be condensed into approximately an acre and a half of retention pond, and has to infiltrate the ground at an elevation of eighty four, which is gonna go right down to the restrictive layer of seventy eight, which is where my cranberry block is. And that's gonna seep into our cranberry block. Now, we start into old issue thing when water retention seeping with infiltration into my cranberry block. It starts with phosphorus and nitrogen. They're reducing it by sixty percent, which is good. But I'm not allowed to discharge any. So I'm accepting forty percent of his phosphorus. What am I supposed to do with that forty percent of phosphorus? Because my discharge goes down to Lake Street. Lake Street is watering. We've had this water, right? It's public water. So I can't release phosphorus or nitrogen downstream. They have no ability or no infrastructure in plan that I saw to remove nitrogen from the water. And everybody knows cranberry growers have proven that we don't release nitrogen downstream, because we don't use much. I use sixteen pounds of nitrogen. Lawns are the problem. They put it on constantly, all summer, that pretty green grass, and that infiltrates it. I don't have a problem with that. But if I start to collect that nitrogen, it creates a problem for me. And there's two ways I'm gonna get it. One, through infiltration, through the pit. Number two, you change the direction of the overflow. The overflow always went out, let's see, the east side, now it's going out the west side. So the east side would have gone out, would have flooded my pasture and drained directly into my cranberry block. Going out the west side, which dumps into that wetlands, which is an issue, because that wetland is what crosses Ambrose's property through a pipe, because he has a pipe buried in the ground, which then comes to my twenty four inch pipe, which is already maxed out in a two to three inch rainstorm. So when that overflows, I have no place for that water to go, and that water is coming to me, because that wetland crosses Ambrose's property right straight to mine. It comes right out the corner. I have pictures of the real flow. I have the pipes. I have all the paperwork that USDA did to protect me from the first development. Cost me thirty, thirty thousand plus, and that was in thousand eight, two thousand eight, or two thousand ten, we started that. In two thousand twelve, the storm in two thousand twelve, I believe, was in two thousand twenty one. And the one in twenty two. My pipes couldn't handle it. I have pitches that overflow my reservoir, it overflowed my cranberry block, it overflowed the drainage pipes coming in. And I just can't hit a little water. And that water that's gonna cross Ambrose's property, there's no place to go. It's gotta come. Because it can't cross eighteen, so I think there's only like a ten inch pipe crossing eighteen, and that's restricted because of the water mains coming from the treatment plant to the water. They have two water lines, and that's the gate that they keep her because the pipe's there, so they can't put a bigger pipe. So that's an issue. I think elevation has something to do with it, too.
Yeah.
That gets to the overflow, Ambrose's property. The semi trial infiltration. So if you're taking sixteen acres of water and you infiltrate it along with the stuff that comes from Pine Court, condensing it to an acre and a half, whatever that is approximately, that when it infiltrates in seventy two hours, it's gonna be a drastic amount of water dumped onto me. Whereas before, when it was just trees and forests and everything else, it took days, right? It took days to sink in, it play layer, and then slowly migrate by the light, and I don't know how many trees, I think. Most trees, somewhere around four hundred gallons a day in the summer, that they absorb, right? So the amount of trees that are there, that water they absorb in this first stack of this year is a lot. But it's not gonna happen anymore. It's rooftops, driveways, pavement, all that comes down into the retention pond. Now, we get into, we get the phosphorus and the nitrogen covered. Now we have fuel oil, oil, gasoline, and other chemicals. So in order to grow fresh fruit or fruit for human consumption, you have to impart, it's called, yeah, good agricultural practices. I have all this stuff right here from D C S. Zero tolerance on on products of control, zero. There's zero tolerance. If I test water, the gasoline, oil, or anything, they reject my fruit. I have to pay them disposed of, and it voids my my contract. So when a retention pond, water comes up, gasoline is gonna flow to the surface, right out the discharge, and down. When it infiltrates down through, it's gonna infiltrate down through to the play layer and disposed into the ditch of my cranberry block, which is at seventy eight, when the retention pond is at eighty four. So gasoline or a huge no no, it'll actually destroy my ability to grow a crop. And that's through D C S and also the FDA. FDA refers to that to good agricultural practices, which then applies it to D C S. The FDA has standards on everything of how much is a tolerable amount that we can be exposed to. And for D C S, it's zero, no controlling products whatsoever. And I'm regulated on everything else. Every chemical you can think of, I'm regulated on, and I'm tested on Fox, because it's food, right? I have to grow food. So when it comes to that discharge, that water that goes out goes into my reservoir, which is water I use on the cranberry block. So hand to hand, that discharge. So the discharge becomes an issue in event of a hundred year storm, which we've had, I don't know, I can count at least five or six. We've had two nine hundred year storms in the last ten years. So that hundred year storm theory thing, I don't know. Here or there, double edged sword, whatever you wanna call it. Let's see, the all the water issues. And the water issues coming off the twenty sixteen road, that water actually flows out at the end of my driveway on twenty sixteen road. So when we get a heavy rain, if you go to twenty sixteen road, you'll see a river coming out the end of my driveway, and if you follow that river up, it goes up into the Clermont property and up towards Pine Court. And it's through Pine Court, right? All of twenty sixteen road is all a pine. So it's all the pine grove, I notice. Just like most of Clermont. But that water, that's how much water comes off that hill, a lot. But what do you don't realize how much water truly comes off that hillside? Because that hillside continues all the way up into the valley. It all cycles down. All the water in eighteen, it all comes down, and it all discharges on the east side of eighteen. Unfortunately, it all comes to me. And and nothing personal against him, but to allow him to have a job for a couple of years to ruin my livelihood and the generations following these livelihoods, doesn't seem fair. I have a whole bunch of things on the waivers, but I assume that's gonna come down the road, because we have to wait on a peer review, the results of all that. And I don't want to get started with that until we know truly what's gonna happen, and then I can make my decisions and options to continue from there. That's all I have on the water issues that I can think of. All the stuff I have right now. I have all the plans that I downloaded that I've done. Madrid, man, I've been there for fifty years, forty plus years of the natural water, one after piece of property itself. And I understand how the water flows there. I can drill a hole at two feet close anywhere on my property and hit water. We can get to that restricted play there. There's almost always water there. But now at the moment, they had rain in sixty plus days, really? Free driving, but normally I can hit it. I have fence posts. When I dig them, I hit water all the time. My fence posts always rock, because they sit in water on that restricted layer. And it's unfortunate we have the restricted layer. If it wasn't there, maybe we would have so much water issues, but there's no place for water to go downhill. Unfortunately, that's, that's my saying until we get the period back. I appreciate your time.
Well, thank you for your concerns. I'll I'll ask engineer Jason if you can respond to any of that. Give us some comments.
Yeah, so we've gone through great extents to, obviously, there's flooding issues on the flooding properties. We've gone through great extents, so the construction of these seven homes and the additional six hundred feet of roadway will not increase any of this flooding issues. And in a, in a sense, it will, it'll help reduce his flooding issues, because we're gonna take some of that water and put it into our drainage basin that has been oversized. So you have less, less water going to their wetlands, to the wetlands that flow down downhill to his property. We've done mounding calks on our infiltration basin to make sure that as that water is absorbed, doesn't create a mound, go out onto the abutting property. And again, so it's gonna get infiltrated, it's gonna go down to the groundwater, and it's not gonna raise the groundwater. It's not, there's nowhere near enough water that you're gonna raise the groundwater elevation. Treatment of any of the runoff. We have seven single family homes. You're not gonna have gases and oils or anything like that. The whole site is surrounded by junkyards and automobile automobile repair shops, so I'm sure any oils and gases are gonna be coming from them, not us. But again, the runoff from the roadway is treated. We have deep some quidded catch basins to make sure any of your floatable oils, gases do not get out. Two sediment four bays where additional settling, any sediment will occur before the water even gets into the infiltration basin. So we're not gonna be polluting whether it's phosphorus, nitrogen, oils, gases, or anything like that. It's not gonna be be polluted by the construction of these seven homes. There is gonna be some lawns. But again, nitrogen for if they're gonna fertilize their lawns, that's based on the nitrogen that they, you know, the bag of fertilizer that they're using for that, that's not gonna impact the groundwater. So we feel that the construction of these seven homes and the additional roadway will not make the situation worse. It will help it to an extent. As you know, it rains, and we have not had a hundred year storm event. You know, ever. That's eight and a half inches of. Ever. That's eight and a half inches of rainfall in twenty-four hours. It has not occurred. Biggest storms we had in twenty-ten when all that flooding was going on was not a hundred year storm event. It was. A two-year storm followed by a ten-year storm, followed by another two-year storm. Quick succession. They were within a week apart from each other. And in that instance, all your. Low areas were all flooded. That water could not be taken care of, but your drainage basins. That are designed for a hundred year storm event did not overtop. They functioned as designed because you did not have a hundred year storm. So again, you know, if it rains two inches on this property, some of it gets absorbed. Rest flows offsite downhill. That's our pre-development conditions that we analyze. And then. In that same two inches of rainfalls, it doesn't create more rain. It's the same amount of rain. Just some is not absorbed because there's impervious surfaces. You have some roofs and you have some roadway. So we have to take that water that's not getting absorbed because you have an impervious area. And let it get absorbed, which is the function of the infiltration basin. You're not generating more water during a storm. You're just making sure that what's not infiltrated because your impervious surfaces are now infiltrated. And you do that with the infiltration basin. Which we have oversized to, to take care of any. Additional runoff that might be coming in. We analyzed. It based on offsite flows coming down from the. Subdivision to the south. So we're taking, that is analyzed in part.
Pine Wood Court.
Yep.
We're not going in there clearing all these lots.
Your name, please ma'am.
Justin.
So my name is James Simmons once again, and that, like she's saying, that's not our intention. We don't, we're not a clear cut build company. So if you look at any of the homes that we've built, which we've built several over the last five years. I'd say a good sixty-five to seventy-five percent of the trees we try to keep. I know we made a.
Are you selling it like each lot and then letting the people or do you guys know about spec homes?
We're gonna do the houses.
So you don't plan on cutting all those?
I have control. I'm, I'm gonna keep control over this whole thing.
Yeah.
I'm not gonna let somebody come in there and clear cut this entire property and make it look like an airport.
Yeah.
I mean. You know, not for argument's sake, one person can come in here and buy the whole thing, clear cut it, make a, a big deal out of it all thing. You know what I mean? That's not my objective. I want place, when I do, I've done a lot of single lot subdivisions, you know, where one lot clearing out the lot, I place the house, I keep the trees as much as you can.
Yeah.
You, you know what I mean? And that's my intention with this. It's not to go through and clear cut all these beautiful, I mean.
Yeah.
If you've been there, it's. There's, there's some gorgeous trees there. You, you don't wanna cut down trees that have been sixty, seventy, eighty years old. You know what I mean? I mean, obviously, some trees are gonna have to come down. Don't get me wrong, but. Once again, it's not my intention nor will it be done that we're gonna go in there and clear cut everything.
Yeah.
Yes, we're gonna have to cut where the houses go and, and you know, keep it clear within a certain extent around the house, but. You know, just for argument's sake, it's not, you know, I mean, I've seen developers go in there and make a mess. You, you know what I mean? Go through, they just wipe every tree out and, and you got an airport and that's just not how we're, we're not approaching this development that way whatsoever.
You're developing it for the owners.
I'm developing it for myself.
You're purchasing it?
I'm purchasing it and developing it. Yes.
Okay.
I wanna have total control so this way it's not a runway strip and every tree isn't wiped out.
Yeah.
Oh yeah, I don't know if you saw.
Anything else? Before I get back to you, is there anybody else that would like to speak on this from the public? Yes, ma'am.
So for one, uh, for Plamont Way. I'm not. Not an engineer, so trying to read all this and everything out of the plans being a little uh. Can someone point to me where the catch basins are? In the existing roadway, not the, if they're gonna be upgrading, the existing roadway. Can somebody point to me where? Those catch basins are or did they?
Are they gonna be anywhere on here?
Existing uh?
Existing.
Proposed ones are.
Proposed. Paige has Armon spell wrong. That is Gary. That's new. You have any clues where the current ones are, can you? No, no, I understand that. I understand that.
It's that's in the middle of David Quinn wants one.
There'll be one there.
There's one right in the middle of you all.
Okay. So are there any between bars and middle bar over?
No. So you're saying there's one here.
That's the first step.
Yeah. So, so I have some concern with that.
That's current though.
No, there is.
No, that's.
That doesn't exist right now.
Oh, you.
There's no current.
There is no current. Okay. I missed one. Yeah.
No, we're operating the, the existing.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
No, but I thought the question was where the existing one is, but I misinterpreted.
Where they're going to be on the existing road, I guess.
No, that's fine.
So the concern that I have is the corner of our property that, uh, abuts Mr. Vega's property. That whole corner, that kind of trifecta, yeah, right there. Mr. Vega, unfortunately, over the years has clear cut that entire property as well as just moved a lot of dirt and everything. Since then, we have had an extensive water problem. In that corner that has repeatedly flooded over the road, washed out the road several times and also flows into Tony's property. Right there. So our concern is that any, you know, anything that's done to the road without addressing that kind of. Corner piece with some type of green. Um, is going to ultimately, it's, it's not gonna solve any of the problems because the water is coming off the Vegas property. There's kind of like a dip there, so there's no place for it to go. It fills up and then it spills over and it eventually actually floods the backyard of Tony's property. Repeatedly. We've taken some steps to mitigate a little bit on the front of our property with, you know, kind of bringing it up and putting the, you know, repaving the driveway. But. If it starts in the middle of our property, that won't. That won't really handle that particular event. And I'm sure. I'm sorry, I'm giving you more water.
The issue is always more water.
There, there's always more water and, and that's. That's been a concern. I mean, I have pictures going back to where, I mean, it was literally like shindy. You had to go in, out with like. Knee-high boots in order to get through the water at that point. So that's one of the concerns that we have, just making sure that that flows. Further down, um, in order to be able to catch any of that water that's coming off of this base.
That's a whole separate problem.
Yeah.
And we can't force that. That's like a sticky situation.
When they were proposing to do a solo lock.
Yeah. What was that? Cause Kevin was on the board at the time. He was on during this. There was a big, there was a lot more on that.
Yeah, and that was a lot of.
Separate from this.
Yeah, separate.
Yeah, and that was.
Like they had said, but the solo company had said, yeah, no, that it, they had even acknowledged it was a, it was a problem. They were.
Yeah.
What they were looking to do was move the water across.
Yeah.
Across Plamont Way into the wetlands over there by putting a culvert underneath that.
And adding another culvert, right?
Yes.
That was what they proposed.
Yeah, nothing happened from there.
Um, and I will say that back in, you know, twenty sixteen and twenty seventeen, the, the water problem, Mr. Vegas property was. Very early in that issue, um, back when the original plans were put in. He had clear cut it, but he, you know, we hadn't really gotten a full effect. Of all the stuff that was going on. He's also now laying road millings. That are a continued concern for more of those water issues. So again, anything that is done to Plamont Way. Without addressing that front side of Plamont Way will likely create some water issues down the, down the way. The other thing that I just wanted to clarify is the culvert that is currently in between four Plamont Way and six Plamont Way, that would be replaced.
It's four. That's this one.
Yeah, so the culvert that runs, cause there's like a little stream.
Yes.
Yeah, just making sure that that's going to be replaced in a little bit.
Yes.
Yeah, that's all.
He's there up making it bigger.
It's gonna be oversized.
Yeah.
Um. Oh, um, for the retention pond. This is, this is the mom of me. We have a small child that lives with us. I'm sure with new house funds, there will also be a lot of young children. What is the safety around that potential?
Well, I mean, it's, one, it's not private property. And two. It's, I don't believe it holds water for that long. I mean. It's, it's meant to disperse the water into the ground. You know what I mean? It's not meant to, it's actually not a swimming pool. It's not gonna.
We, we have to have you talk.
Sorry, I apologize.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, so that is, it's an infiltration basin is required to drain in seventy-two hours. It doesn't hold pool of water permanently, so you give water in there after it rains. Days afterwards. It's gone. Safe tissue. Yeah, there's an outlet. It's lower, so it's not a deep pool of water. But it's max and that's.
It's not, there'll be like a five foot deep.
Okay.
Art, ever.
No, no, that's, that's fine. Um. That was my question there. Um. The other question I have was around the utilities. So in the, in the plans, I noticed that there's a couple of places where they're saying there's underground utilities. Will those extend the entire length of Plamont Way or only in the new section?
So. Clearway has utility poles at the moment and those are gonna stay. We have tie-in underground. Yeah, for the extension.
It did, it did, I did notice on the plan where it said that the utility poles are gonna be relocated, but I didn't see where they would be relocated to. Are they gonna remain on the? The side of the street.
They just have.
Or are they gonna be?
They have to be scooted over a little bit because they're right next to the road down. The roads are wide to the required width.
So they'll. They'll remain on the same side that they're existing right now and just move.
Yeah.
And again, any changes that, that would be part of. The final save from that. Say we'd like to move their poles somewhere else.
You have to adjust your plans based on that. How far, how far up to the pole three pumps? That's what that?
Uh, they come up almost to the, this house a lot of one. We're tying in there.
So you'd be tying in there for the culvert sack. Do you have any thoughts on this water here?
It's a low area on Vegas property. We can't do anything about that. There's a low area there. If you cut all those trees, then water's gonna gather there. If it does get into the roadway, it's gonna be carried down. Down the road into our catch basins and into the drainage system. Cause that all pitches towards those catch basins, pitching from middle of our road down to our catch basins. But again, the offsite, those bobs, can't do anything about it.
Yeah.
So is there an opportunity to add an additional catch basin in that corner? I mean, if you're putting one in front of our property, is there an opportunity to put one like in between the end of middle of our road and our property? Cause now I'm being more concerned that all that water is now going to end up in my front yard.
Nope, it's not gonna leave the roadway. It's gonna stay in the roadway and go in the catch basins and down to the infiltration basin. It's up in the middle. Water flows downhill, so.
What's the elevation staying the same or going up or down?
Uh, relatively the same.
Relatively doesn't.
Uh, there's a couple inch difference, I believe.
Not much.
There's an inch change here and there, up and down. Based, because it's not, the road there is not flat. It bounces up and down. So it's, makes it a continuous slope and within, you know, the features of the existing.
If the roadway is elevated at all, the water will begin to flow on my property.
Sorry, yeah.
It, it already happens. So if the roadway is elevated at all from where it currently sits in that corner, so water will flow onto our property. It already does. It has passed. So any elevation change? The, the last thing that I do want to mention. Is with the existing private way. Our understanding is that there's currently no, he's in a right of way on the existing roadway. Several years ago, prior to my mother-in-law's passing, she hired the town and told something along the lines of that we owned to the middle of the road. As a grandfather. Ordinance of, of some sort. Um, we have, we haven't had a chance to really research into it, but we are concerned about. The portion of property that is between the existing roadway. And our house, which is something that my husband has been maintaining for fifty years. He's lived there his entire life. There's an agglia tree, there's grass, there's sections of, of the driveway that we recently redone. So I know that that was a concern in previous plans that were brought for a subdivision. What, if anything, like saying more type of thing.
What's the concern?
So the, the concern is that. Currently on our deed, our title, there is no right of way. There's nothing documented. So. From what we understand from. Because there's no right of way and we don't own Plamont Way. Right? We don't own Plamont Way, I should say. That's owned by third to your owner. That because there's no right of way documented on our title or on our deed, it's assumed. That we own to the center line of the road. In order to have access to our home. We don't, we haven't heard how that.
It's a private way.
Plamont Way is actually owned by the same people on thirty-two and Boro. So now it's gonna become a public way. As part of.
Gonna become what?
Public way.
Lot, yeah.
So it can become a public way as part of some.
Public way.
A town accepted road is what you wanna?
Yeah. So it's, it's a forty foot right of way existing. Um, once we get past the existing home, it becomes a fifty foot right of way for the, it's only, uh.
So is that acceptance of the road done prior to construction or after?
After.
So what if, what happens if the road is not accepted by the town?
We hold money in a bond. We, we hold money in a bond till it's done. We don't like, like let it go till it's signed off, accepted, stamped, and then they get their money back.
So it, it never gets signed off, accepted or stamped?
Ha, has to. They're gonna have a significant amount of money, more than same road. Whatever comes back goes to, in Nanta, based off that quote, how much money gets put in it.
What happened in between as there is no right of way.
There is a right.
Yeah, you have a right of way.
I think you have a right to your property no matter what, right? A right to get to your property.
No, that, that's true. It can't be left off.
So I don't, I honestly, I don't know. That's, I have no idea how that works. So I don't, I honestly, I don't know. That's, I have no idea how that works.
That's been the general consensus. A lot of people have asked.
This, this came up with the, with the previous buyer as well. And this was the sticking point of the last sale.
The, in twenty-seventeen subdivision?
Yes.
One of the reasons why the settlement.
And it was hard to understand that it should have been included in the initial plans with the surveys, so that's why, again, we've gotten mixed information from a lot of people because it's obviously a very complicated situation.
Yeah.
Um, but we, we heard from some people that it should be included in the plans as part of the subdivision. We've heard other, you know, that we can't be landlocked, so we're just bringing it up here in the hopes that one of you knew, but apparently that doesn't seem to be the case. But again, our biggest concern is, you know, similar to Mr. Ashley's in the sense that there is a lot of water that pools around these properties. We currently have three subpumps in our basement that run every single time. There's even a, a lightness. So um, you know, ensuring that we have proper drainage, that any additions or improvements to the road are done so, so that it does not to the detriment of our property. Um, and that it doesn't make the situation worse than what we're currently in.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Dave, I can.
Go ahead.
Some of that.
Go ahead.
Yeah. So to finish what Chris said, if they were not to finish the road and get it approved, the town has that money. And the town would finish to our specs and get it approved.
Oh, okay.
And also, I, currently with, with the right-of-way, you don't technically own the road. Everybody that would have a right-of-way would own it until it becomes like a public way or something like that. So even if they're in the middle of construction, they can't block you out of your road if that's what you're worried about to get to your property. You still have the right-of-way. You don't own it, but you have the right-of-way. They can't stop you from, you know, coming through to get to your house.
Okay.
Well, a- as I said, the reason why we bring this up was because the last buyer, it was the ninth hour and they came and said, you, you need to sign this.
Yeah, like there was like.
Because their attorneys had stopped.
Yeah.
Their attorneys had stopped the sale to say, hey, you need four Vermont Way to sign up on this easement and right-of-way access. Again.
Yeah.
That was, that was what we were approached with, unfortunately during the negotiation. My mom passed.
Yeah.
And everything was kind of put on hold. So. By, uh, bylaws, probably state law too. If the, if there were to be a house approved back here, there would automatically have right-of-way through by your property to get there. So they wouldn't be landlocked. Right. No, I, I agree with you. I'm just saying that we were here once off the road.
Yeah, I wasn't here for that.
No, no, it wasn't brought up. The planning board, nobody had known about it. It was brought up beginning when they were trying to close.
Yeah.
Is there a house on this, this lot here?
Yes, that's it.
Yeah.
Do they still, they have the same problem?
Carol Vermont, six Vermont Way. Um, that is my lot, six Vermont Way. I don't have any problems with it at all.
Okay.
But they're part of the same.
They're also part of the, of the sale of thirty-two Middleboro Road. Um, they're, they're all part of the.
So this is part of this whole piece here?
Well, the, the person that lives.
The trust.
Yeah, so the person that lives at six Middleboro Road is also part of the trust, one of the four brothers that is part of the trust that owns thirty-two Middleboro Road. We are four Vermont Road, Vermont Way, we are not part of the trust. Um, and we are not part of the, the sellers.
Okay, gotcha. Anything else? Uh, go ahead, Chris, you want to say something?
No, I'm just.
Anything else?
I think that, thank you.
You want to?
Frank Ashley and fifty-two in the road, twenty-six feet in also. So I'll start off with the junkyard comment. I find it pulsive. Uh, I'm a junkyard and farm. I have nothing on my property. Andros has some stuff on his property, but I monitor that water on a regular basis to make sure that I'm not getting anything infiltrated from his property. So if he wants to direct that towards Andros's property, he can. I don't expect him to comment on my property. I've done nothing but try to maintain good property, good hygiene, and good water practices because it's required to be in agriculture, right? It's required. I, I can't dispose of stuff downstream anymore. I just can't do it. So I mean, the, the twenty, the twenty-twelve storm that we had were better prior than twenty-twelve. But in twenty-twelve, we had to do a reconstruction on the backside of our cranberry lawn because of heavy rain. It actually sloughed out the, and sank from the heavy rain that got down on the clay layer. It actually sloughed out the dikes. We had to reconstruct the entire back dike and also the backside of our reservoir that blew out because when that blew out, pushed all the water out into the reservoir, blew out the river. And that is all federally documented and federal USDA, FSA, NRCS engineered, engineered what we had to do to fix that, to wind, raise everything. So the seventy-two hour infiltration, they've all said it multiple times, that it puts all that water into the catch basin or into the retention pond. Which, that's a joke. The problem is, is it puts it all there and has to infiltrate within seventy-two hours, which then dumps sixteen acres of water plus the water from Vegas property that's now gonna be added to it, plus all the water that's coming off my court. It is all going into a catch basin, uh, retention pond. That's way directly above my cranberry lawn by six feet. It's six feet elevation and a clay layer there. So they've all said it, it adds to the water. Well, that water is all adding to me, which, which is the problem. And unfortunately, to fix all his problems with water just makes mine worse. Every time you fix a problem upstream, it just makes mine worse because all you do is condense into water and making it move faster. So unless you can skip the water over my property and unfortunately over three of my properties, they're all in that corner. And then everybody downstream all the way to Lake Street. It's not fair to ruin my livelihood and my children's livelihood and my grandchildren's livelihood, that my grandfather, my great-grandfather, my great-great uncle all started before me so that he can have a job. That was involved with the septic tri infiltration. His bricks and, oh, and the bankruptcy thing. That's all fine and then you put money in a bond. He starts a development that's uneconomical and financially doesn't make sense. It doesn't work. Everybody who's tried this has backed out because it doesn't work. So he gets started and he goes bankrupt in three years, leaves a mess. You guys have a bond to do whatever, but in the meantime, my livelihood's gone. I, I can't bring it back. It's junk, right? Once you ruin my livelihood, I can't get it back. I have to fight day in and day out to keep my livelihood, to keep agriculture in our town on that property. And if he goes bankrupt, and not even just because of this, this project, it could be anything that causes him to go bankrupt, anything. Where do, where do I stand? I'm the victim and there's nobody protecting me. The planning board, CONCON, MASTDEP, USDA, FSA, NRCS are all there to protect people from other people doing things that negatively, negatively affect other people. And this project, unfortunately, not his fault or the clan mom's fault, is gonna negatively affect me, my kids, my grandkids, and every generation after me that wants to continue agriculture in that area. And then not just me. Also downstream, we have Nate, who's on the corner, which he's not in the butter. Tony, which I guess he's not legally in the butter because he's across the street. He's affected. Shepard's affected. Andros was horribly affected by this. Then we cross Keen Road, this house is across Keen Road that are, that are gonna continue to be affected with all that water, right? Because I have to get rid of the water. It has to cross my property. Well, it's gonna go to the next person downstream, and it's not fair to them. And that's one of the reasons I haven't pushed the issue about Keen Road. Because if I push the issue about Keen Road, of putting an eighteen or a thirty-six empty pipe across Keen Road, it's gonna flood out the next guy. So by, by, by putting pipes on Clanmont Way to remove the water above him, just makes the problem worse down. Right? And not only worse, as in the amount of water, but how fast it gets there. That water's gonna travel from Vegas property, route Keen, the property from Kleinport, all the way to me in less than seventy-two hours now. Whereas before it took a couple of weeks, which is a huge concern when there's only a six-mile elevation difference between the bottom of the pit and a restricted level of my pressure. I take one, because I'm.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody else wanna add anything to this? The board, go ahead. Oh, sorry, ma'am. Your name, please?
Vega sixteen Middleboro Road. I'm abiding by my court. I assume I, I work by my court.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That, right here.
I'm way up. I'm not in a butter. That's John Vega.
Okay.
I'm up the street. I'm not in a butter. I'm here because this is my neighborhood and it matters.
Yeah.
Um, I just have clarifying questions because I moved in in twenty-fifteen, so I have no idea about any of this taking place prior. Um, but I guess my first question is, why didn't the development happen in twenty-seventeen?
It was a solar farm that was going in last time.
No, there was a, there was a, there was a subdivision in twenty-seventeen, and solar farm was in twenty-one or twenty or twenty-one.
Yeah, sorry.
Why did it fail?
I don't know about the twenty-seventeen.
Twenty seventeen was approved.
It was approved by the planning board.
By the planning board.
Yes.
It was an approved subdivision.
It was an approved subdivision, correct.
It was all, all said and done. It didn't fail, but the gentleman ran out of money. And this never continued as, sorry, I got.
So. Go ahead, go ahead if you want to answer.
The previous file filed was pending.
Of what?
Of the pendants.
I'm sorry, I just came down that someone.
Oh, yeah, the dependence is a legal term. Um, there were contracting issues that, that arose from the sale of the property um, with, with the butters. I mean, you, you can look it up.
Go ahead.
So again, Frank Ashley, fifty-two in the road and twenty-sixteen road. Those plans that have been approved in twenty-seventeen were not finalized because my appeal had never been heard because they had backed out of the deal before those plans ended twenty-one day, it was twenty-one day period for appeal before I could get it to MASTDEP and all that. So they keep saying approved, but there were many, many revisions and a lot of differences. And my appeal process never got a chance to go forward because they had backed out of the deal. And same thing with the solar camp. So if I had made an appeal at that point, it would stop everything until it went up to MASTDEP. And then we're having to go through all the, the federal, state federal resources for agriculture.
Okay, so, does that kind of answer your question? Yeah?
Yeah, I just thought it was important to have that information since we can, I mean, we're, we're, this is not the first time.
Yeah, well, I was only on for the solar farm.
Yeah.
And then we just seen this.
Are there any records showing complaints about the water issues in the town hall? Because I've heard this and I don't work at town hall and I don't have, I'm obviously at the top of Hill. I'm sorry, guys. My lot back there, you got water from me. Sorry. Do not say the law.
I don't, I don't know who would handle a complaint like that. Would it be CONCON? Conservator?
Yeah, right.
Sorry, has this been taken into consideration in, in this development uh, further than what's already here? I mean, I'm sure there's some consideration of that, but.
Their job is to, is to do this property here, not to do anything here really. That's, you know, that's existing.
I believe in the solar farm. Last time we saw, we got them to start doing work on the existing road and then upgrading uh, the pipes under the road. Um, and we were going there, we did a site visit, talking about water. Um, saw his, his site and uh, his farm and kind of after that it dwindled out. Never really heard much.
Is there a reason why only that side of the site is taken care of if the whole Vermont Road is being accessed and why there wouldn't be further, I guess, I think you guys just catch basins uh, at the end of Vega Drive, at the end of Vega there? Like, why would that be eliminated if there's so much water coming off of there and we're trying to, it sounds like work on some water issues here?
Well, they're not responsible for water coming from, from
Yeah.
properties. They're only required to, to concern the, the property that they're developing here.
Okay, even though Vermont Way is part of this development?
The not, the existing, yeah, but they're uh, well, how it came out, but it the Vegas water is another issue and it's not necessarily, they should go and it's a hard, because you guys have been going, right? You've been making complaints and this has been an ongoing thing before this development was even going.
But they are officially now touching this problem though, so.
Yeah, I guess.
Their road is now becoming part of this existing issue. So how is it that we're ignoring the whole totality of this issue? I guess is what I'm saying. We're only seeing part of it, but they are now redoing this road, correct?
They're going to redo the road, correct?
Improve it, yeah.
Improve it, yeah.
But we're ignoring part of that problem.
If I may.
Go ahead.
Um, thank you. I, I agree with you on that. As far as I'm concerned, you are changing the existing topography on that road. And I have yet to see reassurances that a change in that topography will not negatively impact my property. And that is really where our concern comes from. We know that there's an existing water problem. We have done what we can in order to mitigate that existing water problem. I have no reassurances that the changes made to the existing roadway, although it's being said that if they are improvements. I don't doubt that there's gonna be new pavement. I don't doubt that it's gonna be wider. But how is that going to affect the existing water problem? And will it make it worse? And I don't think anybody in this room right now can tell me with certainty that it will not make it worse. Um, and that is really where our concern is because to my, my neighbors, and I haven't met you yet, so hello, I'm Shelley.
Hi.
Um, you know, to my neighbor's point there, you're not just touching the property at the end of the road. You are touching the existing roadway. And that existing roadway is part of this project, and it needs to be taken into account, existing water issues that are on that road.
I agree with that. It's just, so their project, you have someone else's project affecting your project. It's how I see it. The Vegas site project is now throwing water illegally down onto you guys. You guys. And that's gonna become your problem.
So again, Frank Ashley, fifty-two in the road, twenty-sixteen road, the water that's coming off Vegas property, that's a natural funnel. That water is funneled and it's, it's not, I'm, I'm, I'm getting observation that you guys are assuming water is pooling there and making.
Just from what they're saying.
That water funnels down.
Yeah.
And crosses. So whether they like it or not, that water is being thrown in their lap and they have to do something with it. And it's gonna go into a catch basin, which then goes to the.
Yeah, to you. That's crazy.
So they don't have a choice to deal, but to deal with that water. It's gonna end up in the roadway. There's no way to stop it from getting in the roadway. Because of the, the parkway, right? It's, it's going to the roadway and the roadway is gonna catch that water. There's no way to stop it. Because of the way the, the, the valley, it's a valley, and then there's another valley, and all three valleys.
Yeah.
And Vegas is one of the valleys that they're on one side, Vegas on the other, and the water has to cross the roadway, and it does, and that's their complaint. And to add to what Frankie said, when that wa, the water today from Vegas property crosses Vermont Way and goes into uh, Tony's property next door, but it does wash the road out. We have significant potholes in the road and the water that has been, that travels over that road and actually washes it out. If that road is raised, then that water is now.
Are you looking?
Road, it's gonna come on my property.
Are you looking for an additional catch basin to put in?
I mean, I, yeah.
Is it what you'd like to see?
When these were, when these companies, they, they, they.
Would you add another catch basin as well?
It wasn't their problem, just like you guys have said. It's not, but somebody's gotta deal with the water if they're touching the road.
I mean, I think we have a lot more problems than just one catch basin.
Or then we just, that pushes down the problem to another person. No, that's, I get that.
Yeah.
So, you know, I mean, yeah, I, I tried this, I, you know, just from my perspective, COMCON me and we, we were here. I met with you. I asked you for an extension. I, I pleaded with you guys to get it as early as possible.
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
We, we, we weren't gonna be, we couldn't do it the twenty-ninth because
Yeah, yeah.
we weren't gonna be around by yet. The twenty-eighth, we were at the COM, the COM, COMCOM hearing, you know what I mean? So I approached Ben and said, what can I do to, to make you a happy neighbor?
Mm-hmm.
This is what I try to do. I try to solve the problems, you know what I mean? And the biggest thing was the detention pond. I says, I talked to my engineer, I says, make this attention pond bigger then. If that's what the neighbor wants and that's what's gonna appease him, and that's what he told me. If that's what the neighbor wants and that's what's going to appease him and that's what he told me at the conservation meeting on the twenty eighth. The day before we're supposed to be here, but we couldn't make it. And so that's why you have now an upgraded detention pond. And it just snowballed, you know what I'm saying? Now, the detention pond's not big enough or it's not going to.
Yeah, no, I got you.
You know?
He approached me after, I'll, I'll explain, so when we were in the first meeting, we had to reschedule it because of the, the, the notices, right? The administrative thing, whatever. So we had to continue it, I couldn't be there, he wanted to go the twenty ninth. I wasn't aware of the meeting on the twenty eighth, I was supposed to leave on the twenty seventh for Ohio.
Yeah.
To go to work.
Right.
So on the, I got the meeting of the, on the twenty eighth a couple days later and I'm like, are you kidding me? I'm supposed to be on the twenty seventh, so I delayed it the whole day, ended up leaving the following morning after twenty eighth. If I'd have known that at the time, we possibly could have done twenty ninth, granted, I was supposed to be out to work there on that one. Here or there, that, that's just an explanation because he, he thinks I'm trying to play games with him.
Yep.
So, he, he confronted me at the meeting, I don't have a problem with that, right, we can all talk, we're all adults. And he asked me what I would take, and I says, no water. My exact words were, no water on my property. That was it, I didn't make any comments about retention pond, make it bigger, he kept asking me, he wanted me to say things so he could hold it over my head. I commented to him, an engineer, no water across the property line onto my property because I can't take it. Those are my exact words, no water. He can say whatever he said, wants, wants to, and put words in my mouth. But my comment to him was no water, period. Those are the only comments I made about water or anything to appease me and he tried, I'll give you credit. He's trying to talk to me, but when my comments were no water, he says, that's not, that's not a reasonable request. Well, it is, it's by law, no water on my property. Can't have it, it'll ruin my livelihood, I've said it a hundred times already, I won't say it again, but no water, that's all I'm asking for.
I do have more questions, but I allow to continue.
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead, did you want to say something Chad?
No.
Okay, okay, sorry, yeah, go ahead.
So one of my questions was actually, uh, Frank, one of us wanted to.
Direct question.
Ask us to actually, sorry, have we probably asked us to actually if there are two solutions that sounds like these wanting more water, so with that being said, if this solution is causing more water, is there a solution for this water to not make it down to our farmer? Because I buy a very sure that this farm stands. I know others in town do, I grew up on a farm, farming is really important to me. And so if a farmer in my town is saying, this is going to be problematic for their livelihood and for my livelihood, my family. How do we make sure that these X number of house lots do not affect our town?
Well, that's what the engineering is for, the stormwater management plan is to not have water from that property spill over.
But it sounds like our neighbors are still concerned with it.
If the engineering's there, you know, I mean.
But it's not, because they're putting me in the retention pond, they've set themselves over and over again. They put it in the retention pond, which then infiltrates to my property, which is six feet above my cranberry. That's the problem, that's water infiltration into my cranberry that I can't have. And then the other side, it infiltrates through the wetlands and floods me out on the other side. That's the problem, it, it's a water issue and it's going to be more water, you can't say there's not more water across the property. You can't, you can't, you, you, you're condensing it all to a small area of two areas, right? One of the retention pond and one of the wetlands is going to come through the pipe. That floods me up every time.
Did water legally go into wetlands?
Yes, so our calculations have shown and they're being reviewed and reviewed, that we are not increasing the flow, any flow that goes outside, water is always going to flow downhill. But again, yes, that's how you control runoff. When you do a development, you put it into a filtration basin to control runoff, recharge some, it lets them out. That is the basis of engineering and drainage analysis. Which is what they review. We've done test pits on our property, we've gone down to elevation seventy six, we have not hit any restricted layer. Anything that gets infiltrated into the ground is going to go down to groundwater.
Is there a possibility to go over this, uh, catch basin so that it goes below the property line? Down the bottom at Miss Ashley's, or is that the lowest that it can go? Because I hear something about it being still above the property line, I don't.
No, so the road is at, at that location, the road's at the exact same elevation that it is now?
Are you talking about this road here, catch basin?
She's saying put on a catch basin below.
That pool, that's not a, I don't know its real name, I'm a school teacher, some educate me, what's that?
Retention pond?
Yeah, the retention pond.
Uh, no, I'm sorry, she's.
Can that, can that go lower in depth so that it's not above the Ashley's property?
It cannot, because it has to be a certain height above the adjusted groundwater in that area, which is, has to go above that ground, uh, ground level elevation.
Yeah.
Um, so that's what it's, it can't go.
I had a question about, Miss Ashley, I mentioned, uh, something about the first development I do at, you, the USDA protecting, um.
The first development isn't germane to this, so, I mean.
Uh, is there a backup plan if this, uh, engineering concept in theory does not actually work in practicality? With all the water being hot?
Well, our engineering firm is overlooking them, so.
So we've had two engineers and one more, this engineer and then the town.
They present it and then our independent engineers that work for the town go over it, they work.
Um, I did have a question about South Coast Construction seems to be very adamant about not clearing it like a runway. Um, and what are they doing with it because it sounds like each lot's not being sold off, but rather they're developing it?
South Coast Construction, you mean Simmons?
I'm, I'm thinking, I don't know, I'm, I thought this was South Coast Construction.
No, this is Sim.
I own Simmons Developments and I also own South Coast Construction.
Go ahead.
So, no, we're not clear, we're not, what, what our intention is, is not to go in there and clear cut the entire property down to basically look like a football field. You know, we, we intend on keeping as much natural growth as possible.
And, and this, uh, Simmons Development is developing every single house lot and it's selling beautifully?
Yes, yes, there will be no other, anyone, there, there will be no selling of lots, there will be no.
You do the building of the houses too.
I do everything, so Simmons Development.
Carpenter.
Uh, Simmons Development is buying the land and is developing it. South Coast Construction Enterprises will be constructing the houses. There will be no one else in there, there will be no one.
Yeah.
Going in with any other say, others than me. And I say that when I, when I tell you I keep the trees, that's what we do, you know what I mean?
Shells out.
Then I, I mean, I've sold six houses in the last three years and every one of them was sold like that because the people love the natural look. They don't, they don't like that football field look like, oh, some people do.
Yeah, yeah.
So I guess for the record, I'd like to say, uh, I know I've cleared my lot of some trees since I lived there. And, uh, so once I sell the actual lot, no one's to say, oh, oh, sorry, the constructed house, so the whole lot with the house on it. There's no, there's nothing to say that I wouldn't come and buy and tear out some trees.
Nope.
So like, that's neither here nor there, I'm going to keep all the trees. Sounds nice, but nobody's, I can clear every single lot of my house if I want, if you want to buy it. So I think that's really important to take into consideration, regardless of what the original Simmons slash South Coast Construction wants to be.
She would take her back one.
So I think, I think that's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask one other?
I'll give you one more.
So, with the, with the second peer review, from an engineering perspective, um, again, I'm not an engineer, so trying to decipher, you know, what was written as a peer review, it's noted several times that the calculations were incorrect, the numbers were incorrect and, and whatnot. So they couldn't make an assessment of the original plans. Um, what is done by the peer reviewers to ensure that the, the calculations that were taken on site by this engineer are actually accurate? In the peer review, or are they just using the numbers that were given to them to make those calculations? Because I'm, I'm just a little concerned if there were numerous calculation errors in the first set of plans. I, I don't, I don't feel confident that there is not a possibility that the measurements or other calculations that were done on site were done appropriately.
Well, our engineering firm does not go out and do
private work.
Test pits or anything like that.
Test pits were witnessed by the board health.
The test pits were witnessed by the board of health, yeah.
Everything's overseen by an entity of the town. And to say that the calculations had an error is, is not a correct statement, there's different ways to analyze runoff drainage and um, well, run, the engineer might analyze it differently, that's why you get two different opinions. But to say one way is wrong is not correct. Um, you know, granted, obviously there might be some typos that they do find in there, but to say that the is not correct, it's, it's not a correct statement.
On the, on the peer review, there was a statement about gas lines. Gas line is a bell block, number one road. So in, i- his answer to the air review was that there is no gas line, you can get gas.
There's gas and water both accessible.
Well, just not acceptable at the moment, they've got a freeze on it, because we have city water. And there, there are houses that have been built in the last ten years that have city water.
Right.
And there'll be future houses with city water, I'll guarantee it. It's just at the moment, there's a freeze on the gas and the water and I, I assume that's up new supply, which eventually, when those mains get redone. So waivers for that wouldn't make any sense, since it's readily accessible on. Waivers, I'm, I'm not worried about waivers now, we'll wait till the, what, peer review on the second time. But the, on the peer review, it, it states multiple times hydrocat calculations of the gas maintenance delineation shown in this plan were miscalculated. And she brings up a really good point, that if there were so many miscalculations so many times. And I have a number, I believe it's forty five times on the peer review, what's to say that the calculations in the field were not calculated correctly, that were then brought back to the office to be done? Our board of health is not an engineer, he's there just to observe the water level and he doesn't do all the math himself. So there is a concern of this, of this repeating calculations error, right? And that does bring, so, some of this stuff I, I have brought to other people to be reviewed. And those were one of the things that were brought to my attention, is that there seems to be an awful lot of irregularities in the way this was done.
Well.
And that, that is a huge concern.
If our E P G says this, then we're going to be happy. I'm not a big conspiracy theory guy, so, you know.
They don't give an approval, number one. And number two, just because they said they fixed it, does peer review go back and review the map again and say?
Yeah.
Okay, how about the map that was done in the field? Because the map that is done in the field, if it was done wrong.
I'm not, I'm, I'm not going down that path, man, you just can't.
But you have to, that's your job. If, if the map is wrong to start, it only gets worse.
I'm taking what you say at face value, is what you're telling me true?
No, it's right here in peer, it's in the peer review, there was calculations during this.
No, you're telling me about the, the size of the pipes and the amount of water you're getting?
They're factual, a measure. You're, you're a lot of my problem anytime, I will show you all the engineered plans that I have from the USDA, the F S N, the N R C S. I am here trying to protect my family.
I can appreciate that and I'm telling you the way we do it is we have our, our reviewers review what they do.
I understand it, but there's a problem with the calculations.
So they'll correct them, that's the idea, and we won't go forward if they're not corrected.
Do we get the question of their review, that they were corrected properly?
If you're a professional engineer?
No, do I get the question of professional engineers that their calculations were, were properly calculated the second and third time, is what I'm asking.
I probably would say no.
So we have, we have no public access to, um, what's the name of the company?
E P G?
Yeah, they actually have a name.
Environmental Partners Group.
Right, so we don't have any access or, or comment period to, to discuss how they come up with what was right and wrong? Of what they considered right and wrong with their plans?
In reality, you don't even, by Massachusetts open law, you don't, I don't even have to open up the floor to the, anybody. You can.
I have attorneys that will take a different on that one. But we, we, I don't want to.
I don't want to get into that either. You have any other questions for, for us right at the moment?
No.
Anybody else have any other questions? You're good, okay. Uh, so, you're going to get back to E P G with the corrections that you sent to us.
Yeah, so.
And they will, and you'll go back and forth with them and.
That's a stick.
Um, so we will continue this meeting, our next meeting will probably be December first, December second, or whatever that is.
Um, December third, I believe.
You think? Yeah, but we'll continue, I'll ask for a motion to continue until that day and if, if things don't work out, we'll push it back a week, uh, with two weeks. Yeah, I'll, I'll need a motion in a second to continue this meeting.
I'll make a motion, continue.
December third at six at the police station.
December third at six, police station.
Motion's made in second and all those in favor signify by saying aye, aye, oppose nay. So, uh, December third, six P M here. We will continue this, uh, this subdivision, uh, meeting. Yeah?
I thank you guys very much for your time.
Yeah.
They have another, uh, conversation with us, they will go, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, secondly, all the water stuff, secondly, they've got many of those, right?
Well.
Well, yeah.
What is happening, you know, when I?
Oh, he's yours.
Oh, let's do that.
Yeah, right. Have a good one.
Thank you.
Yeah.
It is.
So, my attorneys are probably going to want this, how do I get?
Um, once it's posted, it will be posted to YouTube, do you have an email?
No, I want just the minutes, I want.
Yeah, the recording.
Okay.
Yes.
The verbal recording, it's not, it's just audio, it's not visual?
No, it's a, it's a whole Zoom, yeah, so it gets, um, posted to our YouTube channel, so, um, I can send you.
I know, I get all the minutes there.
Yeah, no, the actual recording gets posted to our YouTube channel, under the planning playlist.
So it's Free Town Planning Board?
Yeah, you just do YouTube, Town of Free Town, and then, yeah, there's different playlists for all the boards. But if you can't find it, just give the office a call and I can address it.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah.
Excuse me, excuse me, could you guys, um, take it outside, we want to continue, hello? Hello, can you guys, we're, we're going to continue our meeting, if you could just take it outside, thank you.
Thank you guys.
I don't have to open this meeting up to anybody, it's one hundred percent wrong, anyway. Uh, agenda item number two, minutes from October first, twenty twenty four and October fifteenth, twenty twenty four. Um, has anybody had a chance to read them? Steve can't, I mean, I just looked at them now, they looked all right to me, so.
The one I was there was fun.
Anybody have any questions on them or comments? Nope, so I need a motion in a second to approve, uh, the minutes from October first, twenty twenty four and October fifteenth, twenty twenty four, as written.
Take a motion.
Excuse me, motions been made and seconded, uh, to accept the minutes as read, all those, as, uh, written, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose nay. Minutes are done. Number three, any other? Number three, any other business to properly come before the board? Um, we did interview, we set up an interview with somebody else. They didn't show up. They were another, no show. I think what, four out of six people did not show.
Yeah, awesome.
So, um, the planning tech, that was for planning land and land use administrator. And we actually interviewed for town planner. We are now uh posting for planning tech. And somebody at this uh table here will be applying for it. And uh, I don't think we've, I think we've pulled back the town planner.
Yeah, I don't think that one's been posted again.
And I think the thought was that there's a, there's a um staff member that's gonna be helping out with the assessors that will help Nicole out. So that's, that's kind of the way we're going for that. Um, as a reminder, next, next week, this time next week, there's a Z B A meeting. A joint meeting with the Z B A going over um accessory dwelling units. Garage size of a thousand square feet. And there's one other thing. I can't remember.
Vacant um buildings.
Vacant buildings.
Fees for vacant buildings.
I'm wondering if we should bring up that a butter's fee that you mentioned, remember? Maybe we should bring up, we're bringing up a fee structure, maybe, yeah. Why don't we do that? And Bill, have anything?
You wouldn't, we've mentioned before about, you know, holding a piece of property instead of a bond.
Oh.
During developments.
You keep, you bit your tongue, Steve. I was very proud of you.
You asked me to check with Kevin. Okay, so I checked with Kevin about it and Kevin says. Technically, he said the planning board ought to get in contact with town uh.
So we kick, we start to kick the ball rolling.
Right, because it comes to the planning board, that's the whole thing. He was saying we should check with the, the town attorney about the whole situation. So everybody will be on the same, because I talked to Kevin, he gave me one thing. Charles Allen, he's got his own theory on it. Everybody's got a different theory on the whole thing. And according to it, you can't take a piece of property. If people don't finish the development, you can't take that piece of property from them. You can put leans against it, but you can't take it. And if you can't take it, so what happens like, with like Alexander Drive, people stop paying taxes on it.
Yeah, then you can take it by tax.
Then you can take it by tax. But so, how many years do you have to wait? You know what I'm saying? You know, you know, you could.
Yeah.
Well, it sounds like, when was that dated? That, that cheat, twenty seventeen, right? So they, they were still active then.
Right.
Cause only seven years ago.
Right. It's been going on for twenty years.
So, it'd be up to me to reach out to town attorney and say, hey.
That's that's one explanation of how it's done because technically from what they're saying is. Like it's, you could wait twenty years before you could take the place over. At that time. And people were selling houses on that, which doesn't come to the same thing that Debbie did with the other one, that technically insurance companies. Can turn around and say, no, I'm not insuring it out because technically it it's not finished.
If I walk down your street and ask how many people, they realize that that was a, a not accepted road, how many of them? Except you, yeah.
Yeah, so, that's what I mean. And but but they all know that the school bus don't come down and pick the kids, but they do now. All of a sudden, last week sometime, they're letting the kid drop down there. I don't know what changed in the last couple of weeks.
Oh, they used to stop in front of your neighbor's two down. She works in the school.
Because she has a child's handicap.
Autistic, yeah.
Yeah, just so they have to pick the kid up. They can't trust him on the end of the road by itself. That's the reason why he come down. But all of a sudden now, they're starting to drop the kids off on the other side of the road from the middle school or something. Before, they used to have to order the bus at the top of the road.
Oh, well. To me, they should walk up to the top.
Uphill both legs.
Yeah. Tenth of a mile, you know? The plows come down the road though, though.
Yeah.
The plow, so.
Only because they were threatened before that. If an ambulance can't get to one of those people's houses on that road because of the snow, they're suing the town. But then the town decided it would fall.
Yeah, and it's somewhat tough. Like this was one of the earliest developments. This is like, this has been a problem from day one.
Thirty years, probably.
Yeah, before I was.
Now the town wants to put a pump station at the end of the road. So you don't own it.
Well, of course, then the town would ask me or the council, what, what, what do you want? What do you care? Why do you care? I just wanna, I guess I just wanna know. Cause we go forward. Like we say, we, every time we do a subdivision or something, we get money to hold.
As long as you get money, but if you're holding the property instead of the bond, because like, like Kevin said, you take the money. You can take money, but you can't take a piece of property from somebody.
We have to make sure that um attorney Kevin uh.
Everybody you talk to has got a different whole view of it. That's why Kevin said, you need to talk to the town attorney and get it done the right way.
And, and let's face it, a developer in a subdivision wants to give you lots. They don't want to fork over the cash because they're forking cash out to do everything else.
I mean, we, we should be all be educated on how it really, how it really affects. Because, like I said, you could be waiting. Like we have twenty years down the road. You're wanting to even a jump of road. By that time, it's already falling apart.
Well, it's falling apart now, so.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll um, I'll, either I'll reach out or I'll have Nicole reach out or something. But if you already give me this email, I can just reach out to her.
Yeah, I think we go to, to reach um town council. I've never directly reached out to them.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so I think we can.
If I, I say, I'll send him an email to her and say, hey.
Yeah, to see if we can, yeah, yeah.
Okay, anything else? So a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
Second, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much.